It started for this evening. Thank you, everyone, for being here. Welcome to the work session meeting of the Norfolk School Board. Before we begin, I just wanted to state that Mr. Clayton was not able to be with us today. He's attending the Urban League Conference. He's the National Urban League Young Professional President, and that's where he is. And we are very grateful that Ms. Martin made some extenuating changes to her travel to be with us today. We're glad you're here safely with us as a part of this meeting. We are very appreciative for everyone that is here. We're going to go ahead and carry on with the work session in discussing the academic accountability. And I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Boone.
Thank you. Dr. Gabriel, members of the board, ladies and gentlemen. This begins our rollout and is one of several presentations we'll make to the board over the next couple of months as it relates to our student achievement and our school accountability levels. You will recall at the last meeting, we provided to you the calendar of expectations around the various reports. Today is, we will give you some preliminary district-level results, and we'll continue to roll out the other information as the state allows us to make those public. And so today, we're going to walk through, it was important for us to do two things today. One, the state has changed the accountability system for school accreditation, so it was important for us to provide background information on that and share that with the board and answer any pertinent questions that may come up from that. And then we'll also talk about what our district-level data represent and what they look like, and some of the early discussion on what the actions were that we've taken. On the 15th, we'll include additional information, including voices from the field, as we like to say, some principals who will also share with us during that meeting. So this afternoon, we have both Drs. Bailey and Rogers and other team members who are going to support the presentation. So at this point, I'll turn it over to them.
Thank you, Dr. Boone, and good afternoon, Dr. Boone and Chairman Gabriel and members of the board. As Dr. Boone mentioned, we will talk about our SOL results as it relates to the Standards for Learning, and it is a criterion reference assessment that measures attainment of knowledge and skills. And so with me today is Ms. McGarrett, Kristin McGarrett, and she manages all of our state mandated assessments. And she's here also to answer any questions that you may have. Just for a quick recap, our SOL start in the summer of 2017. So there are three administrations of our SOL tests. It's summer, fall, and the bulk of our assessments are in the spring of the school year. We also have technology-enhanced items, which are part of our computer adaptive testing, as well as we have other assessments for our students with a disability and our English language proficiency students. I apologize, my voice is cracking a little bit. But at this time, we're going to talk about a data at a glance, and I'll turn it over to Dr. Rogers.
Thank you, Dr. Bailey. Good afternoon, Chairman Gabriel, school board members, and Dr. Boone. I'm going to give you a high-level overview of where we are as a district as a whole in each of our content areas, and then we'll spend a little bit of time talking about where we are at the elementary, middle, and high school levels as well. And as you can see, right now, where we are with writing, we're at 77 percent, which exceeds the 75 percent expected benchmark from the state. We're at 73 percent in English reading, 76 percent in history, which is a measurement of our students in grades five, eight, and our end-of-course history assessments at the high school level and some at the middle school level as well. We're at 72 percent in science, which is assessments taken at the fifth-grade level, eighth-grade level, and all the end-of-course assessments at the high school level. And then we're at 68 percent in math, which is a measurement of our students in grades three through eight, as well as our end-of-course assessments. I want to point out that the data that's being shown is, again, preliminary and is certainly not official until the state releases official data in the coming weeks. So we anticipate that there may potentially be some changes, especially as it relates to the measurement of growth, which is not indicated in the graph that's shown before you. So as Dr. Bailey mentioned, she is going to present what the differences in the manner in which we will be assessed by the state in both measures, the old way and the new measurement of accreditation. But this data and information does not, again, take into account the growth measures. We have some great news to celebrate, and we also have some opportunities for improvement. So I would like to say that I am extremely, we are extremely proud of the work that our schools and our staff have done, certainly this year, and working with all of our students and all of our families, as well as all of our teachers. So I'm going to move on, and certainly feel free to ask questions as we go through.
And let me just add, you will learn more about the growth data piece and the significance of that when we get into the discussion about the new accountability system.
So what you have before you, again, is preliminary data, and it shows change over time. And as you can see, we have shown growth in English reading and in English writing, and particularly in English writing. Market growth there. Although we did not realize the growth that we planned for in math, history, and science, we still exceed points where we were in 2013 and 2014. And I'll share a little bit more about what we know that's attributed to right now, based on preliminary conversations. And again, the data you have before you is preliminary, and it's certainly subject to change based on what the state shares with us in the coming weeks. So I did want to point out that this is change over time, and right now, at this point in time, this is where we are. And again, it does not take in the growth model that Dr. Bailey will share with you momentarily. So how do we do at the elementary level? At the elementary level in grades three, four, and five, as you can see, we showed improvement in particularly in the area of reading at the fourth-grade level and at the third-grade level. And we fell pretty flat right now at the fifth-grade level. And that's, one of our areas of focus is looking at literacy very carefully and being purposefully and purposeful and strategic with regards to how we offer literacy in all of our schools, in elementary, middle, and high school. And you'll notice that in math, we also have improvements in grades four. We fell flat in grade three, and we took a slight dip in grade five. And I'll share a little bit more about that later on within the next couple of slides. But we did show market improvement in those areas. And I wanted to point out particularly when we look at the growth model at cohort groups. So if you notice in grades five, the arrow points from last year's fourth-grade students and how they performed. They were right at about 70 percent, meeting benchmarks in 2016 and 17. That same cohort of most of those students are at about 75 percent, which meets the benchmark set forth by the state, being 75 percent. So we see great growth there. Same thing holds true in fourth grade for English, but we'll look at math. We showed a slight decline in the cohort performance from grade four to grade five. And we can attribute that to a couple of things. And as was mentioned last year, when we look at data, it does not give the entire picture of all of the students' performance. We do have some outliers. We saw some schools that had some great growth, and we have some opportunities in different schools in different areas. For third-grade students last year, 66 percent of those students were performing at benchmark. This coming year, though, same group of students are most of those students, we are at about 73. So we've shown some growth, which is what the state is focusing on now, and it's not just the one-shot deal, how many students are passing. The idea of growth is certainly being recognized. So I did want to point that out to you all, that we certainly do look at those models of growth as well. So that's where we are with elementary.
And let me also add, looking at it by grade level, we know in the purest sense of cohorts, but that's our closest cohort model when we look at data at the district level. I think it's important, again, to recognize our efforts around literacy are beginning to bear fruit. And so when you look at fifth grade, yes, fifth grade is flat. But when you look at the growth of those students from fourth grade to fifth grade, that's the significant progression, and the type of progression that we see can, that can be sustainable over time. You know, I've said to the board repeatedly in these three years that, for me, it's important to get measured and sustained progress than necessarily get these huge bumps, that then all of a sudden, we crash the next year, and then we're up and down, that what I call the bad dieting effect. Guess that's the reason I never lost a whole lot of weight, but because, but it's just that idea of what we want to be able to see sustained progress with cohorts of students over time. And that's when we also begin to see what's the, what's the results from our efforts as it relates to literacy in other areas. So I particularly wanted to highlight the literacy piece, because we are trending in a very good direction as it relates to elementary.
And to Dr. Boone's point, we don't have an arrow showing where the third-grade students were in 2015, 16. But if you'll note, that in 2015, 64 percent of those students met benchmark, and then the subsequent year, when they were in fourth grade, we were right at 70 percent. So there was a 6 percent gain. So as Dr. Boone just shared, we certainly are trending in the right, in the right direction in the area of literacy. Next, I'll advance on to where we are in our middle schools. And you'll note, English reading, I'm sorry, English reading, we did show improvement from 65 percent to 68 percent. In seventh grade, we moved from 73 percent to 75 percent, meeting the benchmark set forth by the state. And in grade six, we moved from 67 percent to 71 percent, again, moving in upward direction in the area of literacy. I did want to point out the trend from last year's seventh-grade students, they were at 67 percent, and this year, 72 percent of that cohort, I'll think, I'm sorry, 68 percent, I'm going to correct, wrong direction, I apologize. In the math, we moved from 67 percent in seventh grade to 72 percent. So there's an upward trend in that area as well. For sixth grade, yes?
Can you just review what the benchmark standards are for each of the ones? Because I'm assuming the ones that are in green are the ones that we have.
Sure.
Okay.
For, for English reading, the benchmark is set at 75 percent. For all others, it's at 70.
Yeah, so English is the 75 percent requirement, and 70 for all other content. It's on.
Need an IT supporter over here to turn my mic on.
We got your back.
So to clarify on your question, I wasn't quite sure. So if it's, if it's in white, they did not meet, meet the benchmark, all these nice green sections?
They did.
We met or exceeded the benchmark?
Yes.
Right.
That's correct.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
But to keep in mind, though, even though it's not colored, we did see growth in some way, or we just did not color code those. Yes. So we did see growth in certain areas in middle school that we're proud of. So for example, 67 percent of the sixth-grade students last year in the area of English, that same cohort is at 75 percent this year. So we saw market improvement there. We do have some areas that we are paying close attention to, particularly in the area of math and in history, as well as in science at the middle school levels. But again, we certainly know what those things are attributed to, and I'll share those with you momentarily. You have any questions about this before I move on?
Were there any new standards that were introduced this cycle? Or I, I know that we were, we had discussed history in the past, but none of these tests reflect any new standards that were introduced?
No, we don't have any new assess standards this year. We're certainly preparing for history, but right now, history is still assessing 2010 standards.
And those will be performance, locally developed, performance-based assessments in history.
Okay.
Going forward. Unfunded mandate.
So with high school, where we are, typically, high school is all green. You'll notice that they are, I'll highlight the good, the positive first. If you notice, in the English writing, we, well, English reading and writing, we saw improvement from 83 percent to 86 percent. We saw a huge jump in English writing from 79 percent to 92 percent passing. So we're proud of our students' performance in that area. You'll note that there are two white areas that are not green, that we anticipated having to start a new data trend line, and that comes primarily as a result of our having to take a close look at the manner in which our students were scheduled at the high school level. We spent a lot of conversation, talking about high school scheduling last year and the year before that, and it seems almost the year before that as well. So we anticipated that there would be some challenges there, and our math staff is certainly working with all of our high school staff, as well as Mr. Coleman, our executive director, in making sure that we are scheduling students where they're supposed to be, and that we're providing adequate support and resources to those high schools to make sure that the students that are in those courses as ninth and 10th graders are being successful.
And if I may, Madam Chair, I know Ms. Basine's hand is up, too. Again, for, for our new board members, the issue had been raised as to whether or not student schedules were being changed at the end of the first semester, when they weren't showing success in certain courses. And math were the primary courses. And so we went through a whole iteration of that, and including inviting VDOE down to do onsite visits and everything else. So as we shared with the board in any number of presentations, our commitment was to address our scheduling, not to make shifts, something that I, again, as I came, that was an issue that we were dealing with, to go to year-long scheduling, year-long classes, not just year-long scheduling, and to move away from offering those half credits that created the opportunity for some of these shifts to occur. So this is truly reflective of students who were supported through, and, and what it looks like. Now, going forward, as Dr. Rogers said, we consider this to be our new math baseline, because as we've not had to change those schedules, you know, as we've gone through our commitment to make sure that if a student was in a course and they complete the course, they will be tested. And we give the supports as they need it throughout the course, not just having them to retake a, a semester of the course before they move on, that type of thing. So this is a result of our being, implementing with fidelity what we said we would do around the course changes.
Madam Chair.
Ms. Basine.
Oh.
Thank you for that, that clarification. Additionally, you know, for clarification purposes, so Algebra I, Geometry, you know, some of these courses that our middle school students also take for high school credit are included in these numbers, correct?
Yes.
Okay. I just wanted to, so that everyone understood that.
Okay. Ms. Campson?
So to clarify for myself, the scheduling that, that you were talking about was what we have come to know as the recycling?
It's what the Virginia Pilot refers to as recycling.
Right.
We have never embraced that term.
Right. Thank you. Well, so what, what you're saying, it sounds like, is that you have remedied that situation by, the scheduling changes that you've made have taken care of that, so we can be absolutely sure that this, this current school year, that did not happen. It will, will never happen again in the future.
That was not our practice going forward. And so we, again, it was our goal, our commitment, both to the board, to VDOE, and to the community, that we would take these necessary changes. And so now, this is what you see, and we wanted to, and if you go back to even presentations we had done as far back as January of 16, we showed that the math courses were the prevalent courses where these things were occurring. Because of the sequential nature, it made sense. But we're trying to give students the support when they are in the course, allow them to be successful all the way throughout the course, rather than having to go back and say they aren't ready for it. And it also forces us, as we think about our entire math curriculum, to make sure that we have the strength within the curriculum, the teaching and learning that's going on, so students can be successful in this.
Thank you. Very commendable that you took care of it so quickly, too. So if we're looking at these two white areas of Algebra and Geometry, these scores that we have this year reflect partly, is that partly a reflection of the, of the remedy that you applied to take care of that situation?
It's primarily a reflection of those changes.
Right. And I was using recycling.
I know.
Because the public uses it that way, and I think that it's, it's important to make sure that the public now knows that you have taken care of this problem. And so we have a little drop here as you move forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Madam Chair.
Sure.
On that point, so I just make sure I'm clear then, because there was, you know, I just used the example of, when we had this discussion before, I would use the example of my children. So I can recall times when they were in Ed House Advanced Math classes, but the recommendation from the teacher to me during parent-teacher conference on occasion was, and it wasn't an SOL-tested course, but if the child wasn't ready, then, you know, maybe it wouldn't be in your best interest to push the child on. So are we saying now that we don't do that at all, or we're just saying that we have cleaned up the piece where it was some suggestion that it was being driven to try to address SOL outcomes?
We have cleaned up the practice where, again, it was a route, had almost become in some schools, a routine practice, that if a student was not being successful in the first semester of courses, then they were placed into another math course. Sometimes their, their second semester would be the first half of the Algebra course repeated. Part of that also dealt with making sure parents were part of that conversation. And so with that corrective action, we require the, so there, yes, there are still instances, as you've described, where a child is just really struggling and is, is going to be difficult for them to find success. It's not about the district, it's not about the school. And so we have to document the process of engaging the parents in that. And so you will see some, but again, it, not at the pervasive level that it had been. But again, those are driven by purely student needs and not any other type of need that was perceived from it.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Yeah, and that whole parent connection piece was a significant part of the work that we did.
And a standard diploma, is geometry included in a standard diploma, or is that as a part of an advanced diploma?
In order for students to get a standard diploma, they have to meet, I think it's two.
Verified credits?
Two maths, and one had to be verified by end-of-course staff.
Right. So it could be geometry, or it could be like Algebra, Data and Functions, and now AFDA.
Okay.
So they have to have at least one verified credit.
Thank you.
Questions? So again, this is very high-level information with regards to how we've done as a district, primarily because the data are preliminary at this point in time, and it would be presumptuous of us to share any additional information. But what I can tell you is that the data that we do have, our team has been working around the clock, literally since we've gotten data, thinking and talking and discussing about next steps in planning professional development that's actually taking place now as we go throughout the summer, and are excited about the possibilities and celebrating our successes, and really looking forward to closing the opportunities for improvement throughout this year. And primarily, that thought process is, is built around our four areas of focus that you all have certainly heard us discuss all throughout this school year, and that's literacy, leadership, rigor, and innovation that was introduced prior to, after this session last year. Because last year, I think when I shared, we only had the three wheels. And between that time and this time, we did introduce the fourth with innovation. I just want to give you just a quick snapshot of some of the things that we've been focusing on to address continuing work, moving in the right direction, and also to be purposeful and strategic with how we attack our opportunities for improvement. The first of which is leadership, which focuses on our collaboration as leaders. We do think that all things are attributed to leadership. So even the district leadership team, we have professional development once a month, and I think I've shared this with you all before. We have IOTs that meet regularly to talk about the best practices, instructional strategies that we need to do to get our students where we need them to be. With literacy, we are at the tail end of our literacy model, and we expect to roll that out this, actually, this summer. And that's a living document. We will certainly continue to work with our staff in providing professional development. We did a huge professional development over the last two years focused on guided reading, that instructional practice, and that has served as well, as evidenced by our data. We will continue collaboratively planning across K-12 and providing coaching to all of our staff as well with the model that we implemented last year. With regards to rigor, we do have targeted professional development. As I shared before, we spend quite a bit of time thinking and talking about how we can provide resources and opportunities for staff to learn. As a matter of fact, we do have our, our very own literacy conference coming up on August 9th and 10th, and that is at Norview High School, I think. Is that right? Norview High School. We've provided opportunities for our teachers to dig a little deeper with rigor, as well as innovation with our technology opportunities. We had an ed tech day in June, I think it was June 20th, and we have another one coming up, there are two days coming up on August 14th and 15th. And teachers are coming on their own time, and to learn how to provide rigorous opportunities for students and to be innovative in the classroom. So I don't want to belabor the point, but I do want you to know that, you know, although that there are numbers, that there are a lot of stories behind the numbers, and that we are working very hard to try to think about how to approach some of the roots of some of the gaps. So for example, with our, our long-term substitutes, how do we address that? We did a really good job, I think, this year of capturing where those long-term substitutes were, and thinking about how we can provide some additional support for them. And we did a really good job with it from an operational standpoint, and from an instructional standpoint with literacy, we did a good job. But as we look at our data and starting to peel back layers, we see the need to take that a step further and being a little innovative with how we approach our long-term substitutes and working with our novice teachers. So we're anticipating some great things with some of those emerging transformational ideas, to be innovative in how we approach support for our students and teachers. So I did want to share with you.
Can I add one before you go?
Yes.
One of my key focus areas really is around this idea of, the ideas of rigor and innovation, and the fact that we have to move away from this idea that the test drives what we teach and how we teach it, because it is with teaching and learning that we get to those results. And so for me, nothing drives me crazy, and going into classrooms where the kids are all in a row, and they're doing, you know, the, the skill and the drill, and, you know, just, just killing their spirit for learning, in challenging schools. Learning is about engaging with material, engaging with content. And so for me, as we talk about our rigor and innovation, the idea is moving away from these kids in rows, and just this whole idea that that's an indication that kids are ready to learn and are learning, and are engaged with their learning. I think I shared with the previous board when I was in a meeting one time this year, last school year, and someone said, oh, yeah, we're talking about summer sliding, oh, yeah, and then they're being in their seats, ready to learn. Well, I need kids not in their seats, ready to learn. And just that I did, that mindset that when kids are in rows, that they are learning, those aren't our kids today. And we shouldn't have a different learning modality and mindset for a challenged school and a school that's finding success, because students learn in different ways. And so that's what we're moving toward, and this professional development, about how do we create these engaging classrooms where teachers are, are, over time, will be greater facilitators of learning than directors of learning. And so that, that's our big goal. We still have a lot of work to do, but that's what, that's all about.
So to Dr. Boone's point, the theory of action, again, this is probably not the first time you've seen this. This is driving all of our work in the district, especially from the leadership standpoint. We just had our District-wide Leadership Institute, where we officially rolled out our official, our final theory of action, which is essentially our promise, and it was designed in keeping with the school board's mission statement. So you'll find a lot of the verbiage is parallel, but what it speaks to is our promise to ourselves as a team, and a promise to our students and our community. It says, in a nutshell, that all personnel will intentionally and on purpose facilitate environments that support exemplary and innovative teaching and learning opportunities in every school, in every classroom, every day, and for every student. And what that means to me as chief academic officer should mean the same thing to any teacher, any principal, any custodian, any bus driver, any secretary in the district. All has the same purpose, that we're here to serve students, and everything that we do should be a function of that. So with that being said, I'm going to turn this over to Dr. Bailey to share the... to share the additional manner in which we will look at accreditation this year.
Thank you, Dr. Rogers. Certainly, we're looking at our planning, 17, 18, we've gone through, but our future planning is 18, 19, and beyond. SOL started in 1998, standards have changed over time, assessment platforms have changed, types of assessments have changed, and now our accountability methodology is changing. And so the state of Virginia, in combining and trying to combine our two accountability systems, which is federal and state together, they wanted to look at, um, different skill sets with respect to critical thinking, creative thinking, collaboration, communications, and citizenship. And so they wanted to make sure that when our grad, when our students graduated from us, that they would have these skills to take them in their career or college and beyond. So...
And, and one additional comment on that prior slide is that one of the things that the state had to acknowledge is the fact that we were creating great test takers. We weren't necessarily creating, creating folks that were ready for work and really ready for the rigors of college also. And so, the, a lot of this is what drove the work, um, over the last probably two and a half, three years. They had been in this movement of this profile for, of a Virginia graduate. And so, as we go forward, you'll see how that plays out differently in the accountability work.
So the Virginia Accountability Reform focused on high school graduation. How do we get our kids through the system within the four years? Give them the skill sets and knowledge that they need in order to be successful. So, now we're at the point where we're looking at high school graduates, are they well-prepared? Some of the unintended consequences of our previous systems are some of these facts that you see here. Um, having indicated a school's status without the community and staff really understanding and thinking of them as a failing school. Um, in some references, TEP prep dominated the school day and year. And then some of the non-tested subjects were pushed out of the school day. You know, as the, they started to adjust what tests we are assessing and which tests we are eliminating. So, when we started looking at our state accreditation, in our old system, the focus was SOL achievement and for high schools, graduation completion index. But this new system is going to take into account not only achievement, but our progress, uh, student group performance, chronic absenteeism, graduation and dropout rate. College and career and civic readiness is something that will be brought on as we move through, through the next four years. But I will say that in our federal accountability, um, system, it has some of the subgroups and some attendance indicators in that particular formula. So, and let me know if I'm going too fast with this, um, because it is, it can get very complex. Um, we have here, um, data measures that are looking at pass rates for English reading for grades three through eight and 11, English writing, I'm sorry. Did it get ahead? Okay, one more, okay. There we go, okay. So, we have our combined rate for English reading and writing, combined rate for math, and that's for elementary and middle. And I'll explain what those are in a few minutes. And then we have a math pass rate for high school and science pass rate. And so the combined rate is a combination of not only the regular pass rate, but recovery points when a student has recovered, uh, more than a year's worth within a school year, and then also growth points. And so they combine all of that together. And they have now levels one, two, and three. And they are associated with colors. Certainly, level one is green, level two yellow, and level three red. The benchmarks are very similar to what you have seen before that Mr. Dr. Rogers had quoted, 75% for English reading and writing, and then 70% for the other areas. Notice that history is not here. And so history will be moving off of being a part of the accreditation methodology. However, the state is holding this accountable through project-based learning. School quality indicators for achievement gaps. This is the additional part that's similar to what has been part of the ESA or the Federal Accountability System. We have graduation completion rates in the past... Wow, not sure.
Right there.
Right there. Um, in the past, um, we have had, uh, seven subgroups. And so we have seven gr- subgroups that will be, um, calculated and measured according to the criteria here. And so here again, the information is sorted out by level one, level two, and level three. Um, just real quick, when, um, you have a subgroup, um, for level one, when you have your seven subgroups and you're looking at the performance for those groups, if you have no more than one student group at level two and all the rest are level one, then you have level one and so forth for the rest of that. Moving into student engagement, graduation completion index. We have, I'm not sure what's wrong with this PowerPoint, but we have three graduation rates that we talk about. Graduation completion rate, a product of accreditation, the federal graduation rate, and then the Virginia State on-time rate, which will come out later this fall. But here again, we have dropout rates, we have chronic absenteeism, college and career readiness index, and we have the same sequence of level one, level two, level three. Green, yellow, red, and the associated benchmarks for those areas.
And again, if you, I, I know you've looked at it, but highlight the footnotes for each of these charts. And it talks about schools can improve their performance level by increasing values two and a half percent more or decreasing some of the rates by 10%. So it gives you credit for improvement and moves us away from that one static number as being the only number when we talk about student subgroups or graduation and those things. So that's an important factor to, to consider also.
And with the chronic absenteeism, it is important for us to note that absenteeism will be counted whether it's skewed, excused or unexcused. And so we'll see some variation in our data when we start looking at school level.
Okay. Yes. So with chronic absenteeism, especially at the high school level, if a student is, how is that being counted? Is it, is it, if they're missing a class, for instance, but are present during the day, um, how is that being assessed?
Well, there's a certain time period when they take what they call daily attendance. And so, um, that is a time period in which this measurement will be captured. Um, the period attendance will still be in a, in effect, but the daily attendance is what they will look at, and that's a certain time of the day.
And years ago, we moved that from the first block of the day. Because, again, because of tardiness. Not to, to support tardiness, but again, it made no sense that we were taking attendance at a time where some folks might get there and miss that, and then they were considered absent for the full day. And so that was many years ago that we made that shift to, I, I think it's after the second block, closer to the middle of the day, that we actually do the daily attendance. Period attendance, we are still, uh, monitoring as, will be monitoring as a district. Because if you aren't in class, you can't be successful there, so...
All right, and I think that's the whole purpose of this particular measure, is to keep kids in school and try to do some of the other things outside of the school day. Uh, Ms. Morton?
It's about the discipline. So, um, if someone's in, well, in school suspension, um, or expelled or, um, suspended, is that counted as excused or not?
In-school is present.
Right.
In-school suspension, a student is present. Out-of-school suspension, whether for one to, to nine, 10 days or whatever else, um, that, those are, uh, unexcused absences because of discipline, and those will count. Now, if a student has been disciplined and placed into an alternative site, their attendance will be taken there and they will be given credit for all the days that they are present there. So that's important.
So as attendant, as present, not as excused absence, when you say there'll be a given, um, when they're...
No, if, if they, for example, when, when you, when you all, uh, will start reviewing, um, discipline reports and things, and you will share when a student has enrolled in one of the alternative sites. Until, but the time between the beginning of the suspension and when they enroll in that alternative site, considered absences. And so that's why it's gonna be important, you know, with our, one of the things we were able to accomplish with the Title IV grant is a transition person to help us make sure we're facilitating getting kids into those sites sooner than later. So, so that's important. But I don't believe that, uh, suspensions are considered unexcused absences, right?
Yes.
And, um, okay, go ahead. Um, I had another question. Can you, um, I guess I'm, I'm not quite understanding the achievement gaps. So can you, uh, speak to that in a little more detail?
Sure.
That's going back to, um, on 18.
So in our achievement gaps, what happens is they look at each of the subgroups. Um, and let's just take, uh, Hispanic students, Ron. They will evaluate all of the seven, uh, seven subgroups according to the benchmarks and to determine then overall what level will they fall into. So while we have the levels one, two, and three here with the, um, the, uh, previous benchmarks, the 75% for reading, 70% for math, then they will look at that to determine whether it's level one, two, or three. Then based on the summarization of all seven subgroups and how that outlays, then it gives them an overall rating of level one, two, or three.
But I think what you're asking is, yes, the seven subgroups will be monitored just as they currently have been. So as a district, we've been doing a lot of reporting out of the, the subgroups. The ESA, the federal requirements, um, noted the reporting of, of certain subgroups. So now the state, in, in bringing the two systems together, will look at those noted, uh, subgroups. And so, you know, in the school board's accountability plan, we had groups beyond what the state reports. For example, we've included our gifted students.
Right, right.
And so, this again puts that focus on what's happening with each of the subgroups. So today, we showed you data in the aggregate for all students who assessed during the school year, who were tested during the school year. But we haven't given the breakdown yet of those subgroups to see what's the gap between, uh, expected performance and actual performance for those various subgroups and whether or not we're showing any progress toward those.
Yeah, and I, I guess my question's more around the, the gap. So the gap is between what and what is really, uh, what I'm getting at?
And I don't know if...
We can see the growth in the subgroups, but I, I want to know between, you know, for instance, students with disabilities versus not, and, and...
Yeah.
And that's not accounted here. So that's, that's what I was trying to get clarification on, okay.
So I'm looking at my team because I still draw back to, to my Massachusetts mindset sometimes and under, looking at what's there. And so there, there was a point where you would look at the, the achievement gap would be between where a student was and the district performance or where the student was and the state performance in an area. But, so they are gonna look at it in relation to the whole. And are these groups making progress? But the idea, then you have some separate indicators. So you know in special education, they have those performance indicators that have to be evaluated. So that will be another look at those. But they will evaluate to see if improvement is occurring, meaning reducing the achievement gap between where students are and where they should be. Because that's the, that's the footnote on this one.
All right. Ms. Smith, did you have a question?
Yeah, there was one thing I didn't understand with the subgroup, and that was how overlaps are taken into consideration.
Right.
Does it seem like with some of them, people could fall into one category?
Now, that's one of the things, and I don't, do we, uh, so, so I gotta go to Massachusetts for a minute, and I'll ask the team to help me out. But the way in which we had to handle that in Massachusetts is that we, we had a couple, they were called, um, high-needs groups. And so, once they put them there, they were trying to prevent that duplicate count. Because you're exactly right, a student could be in, in three or more of these categories. So it could be, uh, race and ethnicity, socioeconomic status, English language learner, student with disabilities. And so what Massachusetts did was create some, some high-needs groups so that if you fell in that, you fell in that once and you weren't being multiply counted. So I gotta look to the team to see how we're doing that in Virginia.
We're, we're counting them in every group that they meet the criteria.
Okay, that's a good question.
Not ideal.
Okay.
You know, work that through our super tardiness group, see if we can get... But yeah, we used to have these high-needs groups so that when folks fell in multiple ones. And then you've had those that just fell in a single category. They fell in that single category. But when you had folks that fell in multiple categories, that, yeah, you...
Excuse the numbers.
Yeah. Yes, and also too, I think in working with schools, and our executive directors will attest to this, um, if you, um, aren't performing as expected in several of the groups, what do you, what do you focus on? You know, how do you structure the support and the resources?
Right. I'm gonna get to, did you have anything else?
No, I didn't.
Okay, I'm gonna get to Ms. Campson, I know you had her hand up. But along the same lines, can a school be rated as a level one school but still not be making the benchmark for their students in the subgroups?
Yes, so if you look at that same slide, you can, but you can have no more than one student group at level two in English.
Okay, all right, so that's with that.
Within each of those cells, it, it shares with you what performance is expected in order for you to, to stay at a level one, uh, achieve a level two or whether you move into that level three, the highest need category.
Got it, okay. I do have one more question. So the subgroup categories, that's a state requirement?
Yes. Yeah, state answer.
Seminent.
State determines that.
And we will provide for you at our next presentation, those seven subgroups.
So are we allowed to choose one group and stick with that one group? Or do you put them in, is the state requirement to put them in all groups?
The state requirement is to put them in all groups, yes.
Okay.
Let me get to Ms. Campson real quick, and then we'll come back to Ms. Bassin.
I thought I was very clear on what achievement gaps were. And after listening to the answers to Ms. Bassin's, I realized that it's very different. Because in the past, when we were doing achievement gaps, we looked at where the students as a whole were, and then we looked at where black males were, for example. And then the difference between those two was the achievement gap.
Right.
Right, it's, it's a gap between, and I think maybe that's what you were trying to get at.
That's what I was saying, between one.
Because that's what I was used to, and, and so that went right past because I just assumed when you said the seven subgroups, you were still doing that. So thank you for that question. So it seems like now, it sounded to be like what you said was now, they take a subgroup and they don't compare it to how their cohorts have done. They instead compare it to a standard number?
Yes.
So it seems like that would disguise...
Yeah.
It's the two...
That's what I was worried about, right.
I mean, I know it's a state thing, so we don't get to make a change, but it just seems like that disguises sometimes the very children that we're most concerned about because we don't really see, if, if these children are all here and they're all sitting in the same classroom, what's happening with these children? That we need to improve and change our instruction. And I know that we're, our hands are tied because the state makes the decisions, but what do you do to address that?
But that's where, again, what the, the good news in this model is the growth factor. So...
Oh yeah, that's great news.
Right, so before, you remember, that it was either passed the test or didn't. And that was the only way you moved along, closing that, that achievement gap. Now the growth of students will factor in, and that's why, um, you see here, you decrease the assessment failure rate by 10% or more. So you get, so students get into certain, um, levels by virtue of, one, did they pass the test or not? And two, did they show growth over the prior couple of years? And so that moves them along in the du- couple of different levels to be able to make sense out of whether or not these students are making progress and our achievement gap's closing. It's gonna be an interesting couple of years as we do this transition. It's gonna be just like we did in 98, and then later when No Child Left Behind, No Child Left Behind came on board. and we were making the adjustments with Virginia's system being different from the federal system.
Quite well.
And so this is going to be the growing pain. This is going to be some of what we're going to have to navigate as a state. And, and you're right, the accountability system is the one that the state board has adopted and we have to function under. But we certainly get an opportunity to inform them around nuances and challenges around it so that they can revisit and see if adjustments need to be made.
Right. Because I'm very concerned that a subgroup will be buried in this kind of, I'm happy about the whole growth model. But I'm concerned about, we have some children that we know have challenges that are in the subgroups that we need to be constantly addressing. And if we, if it isn't so sharp, because, you know, I can remember in my school, we were celebrating finally breaking ninety in math, and we were having a big celebration. Why not? And, and my math specialist was over in the corner on the computer doing some calculations. Because I had, and she said, stop, stop. I have, you know, some information about the gifted kids. And I'm like, yeah, yeah, tell me tomorrow. Party time. And then she came over and she's, you know, like turned the music off and she said, I'm looking at this and I'm seeing that there's a gap, but I'm looking at my gifted data, and there's a gap between the performance of gifted children, a black-white gap. And, and only that we were disaggregating it against the, each other.
You're doing the aggregate.
Here are the gifted kids, and this is what they did in math, you know, across the grade level. And then, but then here are the white kids and here are the black kids, you know. And so that's a big concern. And how are we going to be able to keep our finger on that? Whether we're looking at the lower performing children or the children that we would assume would be high performing. There's, I mean, I consider that a concern that I know we have because of state mandated. Is that something that, that you'll be striving to look for a way to compensate for that? So we don't lose some of our subgroup children.
The school board's accountability plan keeps us true to that. And because remember, this is the state's accountability system. Right. But as a school board,
Yeah, we've gone beyond.
We've gone and developed goals and metrics that-
Continue to track the pass rates before all the other stuff is in so we can truly see if we have a subgroup that's in trouble. Yes. Thank you very much. That's what I was looking for.
And that, that was what I was, you know, wanting to say that, that that is, you know, our school board accountability, accountability plan is, you know, rooted in looking at equity. You know, it's with an equity lens. It's looking at all of those gaps. And I particularly wanted to put it out there as a, as a note because I do think that your comment is something that we need to look deeply into in those that are, are touching, you know, different subgroups and create, perhaps creating, creating a subgroup that does capture those students so that we can closely monitor. And perhaps, you know, as we budget to, you know, do more student-based budgeting where we see that in this school, there are kids that are falling in three categories and perhaps need more resources to support a child, you know. So just putting that in there as a note to, of something for us to, as we further develop that accountability plan.
And before we move on, in the ESA, which is a federal accountability system, they have target group one, target group two, and three. And which in those target groups, they count the students once per, yeah.
So we could maybe replicate that model?
We could, as we look at our school board.
Well, the state's going to do what the state's going to do.
You said that's ESA, not the state. Okay.
And so just to kind of illustrate the growth and accounting for the growth, we have a chart here of the SOL performance levels where we have below basic, basic, proficient, and advanced by grade level. And so what the state has done is separate each assessment or performance level by low and high. So if I were a student and I were a third grade student and I scored on my skill score two seventy-nine, then I'm categorized in the below basic. And then the very next year, as I get promoted to fourth grade and I take the fourth grade assessment, I score, let's just say, three hundred. And so therefore, according to the schedule, if you will, that's, or the formula that supports this matrix, it indicates that I have shown adequate growth. And so therefore, a point is given to the school for that.
So you move from the low below basic-
Right.
-to the high below basic. You aren't at proficient yet. But you've shown growth, and so you get credit for, for that growth happening.
That group puts you in with the group that's proficient.
Right.
You, you get, no, doesn't put you in the group with proficient. They do the proficient students. And then there are extra factor points that are added, that are put into the, the formula around how many kids showed that growth.
So if I have a hundred children and seventy-five of them, say fifty.
There's actually in a couple of slides, we're going to show you that.
Yeah, we'll support that.
Let me, let me, let me ask clarifying question real quick, though. So all of the growth rewards are based on individual students-
Yes.
Yes.
Performance. It is not third grade last year and growth to third grade this year. It is all tracking that student.
Individual students.
Individual student. And that gets to some of what Ms. Campson and Ms. Basine were talking about. That doesn't allow us to lose kids in some of this process. Because again, what's happening to individual students, and it gets back to my early comments about focusing on teaching and learning versus readying for the test. Because readying for the test and doing the test is one thing. Making sure that students are learning and making progress is where we show up here.
Okay. Sorry. Ms. Basine, go ahead.
So what, what if a student was, you know, in below basic, but then they, the next year, they, they jumped into the basic proficient or, you know, multiple growth categories? Is it additional points or is it still counted as just growth, a growth point?
Just a growth point.
Okay.
It would be great if they jumped multiple levels with multiple points.
There are some that have, you know-
My pop goes off.
Yeah, yeah.
Right.
I was just curious if there were extra credit for that.
I, I wish, yeah. And so we had another example at the sixth and seventh grade level. Same example where they were in the high end of the below basic. And then the very next year in seventh grade, they got on the low end of basic. And so a growth point is awarded based on the growth of that student.
Ms. Campson?
Trying to stay with the rules. So it doesn't work in reverse, though. We don't subtract points if they drop.
No.
No, don't subtract, but it shows up.
Thank goodness.
And if a student doesn't pass the test, that's where you get the gig on that.
And this is a way to give credit for the achievement of the student, even though it may not have met the benchmark.
Right.
And credit to the teachers, too.
At this point, basically what we will learn to do is that we have a fairer new accreditation formula. But at the same time, we remember to keep our eye also on the growth, the actual growth, child by child. So that we're, we're now starting, instead of having it one, test scores and accreditation, now we have two things that we look at. We look at accreditation, but we also continue-
Pass rates.
Pass rates.
Pass rates, growth, attendance, you know, so you have all of those multiple measures that we're beginning to look at.
But, right, exactly. But what my question was, is those are all part of the new accreditation. But at the same time, we hold on to-
Pass rates.
Pass rates to make sure that we're tracking and trending our data.
That's the first part. When we, the very first chart, the matrix that Dr. Bailey presented talks about SOL tests. So that's, that's the achievement.
We'll be continuing to do that.
Right. And that's where you saw, they still stayed true to the seventy-five percent pass rate requirement to be a level one in English. And then seventy percent pass rate in, in all of the other areas. So that's where you stay true to passing the test. Growth gets us the closer to, are we learning?
Right. And so this illustration, same concept for our math. And so that you can see, the difference here is because Algebra I may be taken by our students at the middle school level, then if they are taking their pre-assessment for Algebra, which is a grade eight test, and then they take Algebra I, then you can show growth into Algebra I. However, that is where it ends. This does not go into the high school level.
Because you're looking at across multiple years. And then once you get to high school, the variation in the courses doesn't lend itself to that.
There's no geometry, then? Okay.
The geometry assessment is still available, but you don't get a growth factor in it.
Wait for that. Okay.
And so, an example, using the old methodology. Ten students attempted the test, seven students passed, three failed. We have a pass rate of seventy percent. So when we have to factor in growth, same number of students, ten students, seven pass, three failed. Another three failed, one student demonstrated growth according to the matrix that we saw. So therefore, we add one point to the numerator. The denominator stays the same at ten. So now it becomes eight over ten. And so the pass rate goes, in the old method, seventy percent, to eighty percent in the new method.
That's the combined rate, so it's not the pure pass rate. So that's, we're going to have to do some language shifting with this, too. This is the combined rate, which is the pass rate plus the growth rate equals the combined rate. So it brings in both into that number.
And it sort of gives us a new baseline.
Yeah, it does.
Yeah. We'll, yeah, we'll need to, to remember how, what our past has looked like. But then, you know, we now start a new trend line going forward with this new accountability system.
Yep.
Just a quick question. So we have the example in math. Is this also applying to reading?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, it gets a little more complex with reading. Because you have reading and writing and the seventy-five percent, so it was easy to use the seventy percent in the example. And you have ELL, and, yeah, okay. This particular chart, just for us, as an example of, you have your criteria, but you have your level one, level two, level three, number schools who met these levels. And so we anticipate a summary type report from VDOE along this line. So after we get through calculating everything and summarizing everything, we have three performance indicators, or three accreditation levels. Certainly accreditate, accredited when you either have all levels in green or a mixture of level one, level two, green and yellow. Accredited with conditions showing that you have some green, some yellow, but a red. And then accreditation denied. Accreditation denied is a status that the state awards to a school. It's not awarded by the individual district. And for this transition year, there will be no schools that are given the designation of accreditation denied. You will, either you're going to be accredited or accredited with conditions.
Oh, okay. Ms. Campson?
So our schools that we currently have with accreditation denied, that goes away?
Yes, with the new methodology.
However, the state will define what are actions that may be required for some of those schools. Because, again, they will have looked at, did growth happen with some of those schools this year and all of that. They'll be looking to see how we've done with our improvement plans with those.
But in a way, it's like we get a fresh start. For those schools, those schools are getting a fresh start.
We get a buy year, exactly.
A year, yeah. And certainly, even if you're accredited or accredited with conditions, they, the actions that are expected, you will continue to monitor your data and monitor your plans.
Right, yeah.
And then to revise your plans if needed, if you have any area in yellow or red. Or subgroup in yellow or red.
And this may not be an appropriate question to ask now if you have something else slated. But so we know we have the Title I designations or labels in the state, and we're looking at state. So how does that impact the labeling by Title I of focus and priority schools? Does that go away?
What the state is still trying to decide what they're going to do with that.
Okay.
You know, the most recent information that we got talks about what the corrective action will be around this. But the idea is that the federal government still requires an ESA that states do significant involvement with the lowest five percent performing schools in the state. That's still a requirement under ESA.
So it's still there.
But what happens, but you know, ESA was, formerly, pre-ESA, was all about, you know, the ranges within that. So states are, now don't have to, they could revise their, their plans, their accountability systems to not be as restrictive. But states are held accountable for defining their five percent of lowest performing schools in the state and what would be the actions around those.
Okay.
Yeah, so this gets us, rather than having priority and focus, and remember, we were in governance training and you were asking. I said, I can't remember whose priority, whose focus, because it's a redundant system, seems like. But this will get us closer to understanding, as, as Dr. Bailey said, that even as you have indicators that fall within level two, the yellow range, that's part of what you have to focus on. So it's not just about, can I get ten more kids to pass the test? It really is about how kids are learning, how does growth impact so that you can get the progress in these levels?
And so moving on to a sample report for elementary and middle, we can see the, the combination of level one and level two, green and yellow, per the categories. And it only has one student engagement measure, which is chronic absenteeism. And based on the information here and what we know, in order to be accredited, the overall status is accredited in this example. Moving on to the high school example, we also see the combination of level one, level two, yellow and green, and one red level, level three for math. Because they have one red level, then they are considered accredited with conditions. And therefore, they would have to monitor their data, review their plans, and possibly revise their plans for the achievement gap of one or more of the subgroups in math. So timeline. This year is a transition year where the state will look at both methodologies to determine whether still a school meets the requirements for accreditation. The first methodology that they will use is the new methodology. And if a school does not meet those criteria, then they will revert to the old criteria. So therefore, there's two ways you can be accredited, looking at both methodologies. However, if you do not meet either criteria for accreditation, then you will be given a status of accredited with conditions. In your, in the individual school reports, it will outline what the conditions are.
And let us know which areas they fell short.
And so this time next year, we'll only have one methodology to deal with, with respect to accreditation. This particular timeline for accreditation, accountability information and reports you saw a couple of weeks ago. Certainly I wanted to point out that we did have some information released to us today related to SOL performance, but it is for internal use only. So that we can start breaking the data down into details, meeting with various groups of people and talking about what this means, and developing the story behind the numbers. Also, too, we will have a press release on August twenty-second where the state will give you their analysis of statewide data for the pass rates in the tested areas. So with respect to accreditation and any schools that are designated as needing comprehensive assistance or additional targeted assistance, that will come out in September, September twenty-seventh. And then the cohort graduation information and dropouts, which, you know, those are different formulas and whatnot than what, what's in the accountability, the accreditation formula, will come out in October first.
But there will be, have been some graduation considered in order to get to the September twenty-seventh if, if a school has to use the new methodology for its rating this year.
Right. And so, yes, the new methodology is using the cohort, four-year cohort group and the graduation completion index. And so, you know, not to, to make it too complex, we have three graduation rates, which is the accreditation calculation, the federal calculation, and the Virginia on-time. And what you'll see in October first is the Virginia on-time, which is also a four-year cohort. Different formula.
Nothing is straightforward and easy.
So I'm looking at the timeline, and something that I'm very interested in is the individual school information. Because I don't want to read about it the first time in the newspaper, you know.
We'll let that happen.
All right. So there is, I didn't see it on here. So there is, I didn't see it on here. When could we expect to get the information by school?
They will send us information, they've given us the dates, they let us know the embargo time, meaning, after that point, they release it to the press. We make sure the board members get it in advance. So until we have that memo as to what the embargo time is, it, it will be around this, the twenty-seventh range, we will release as much as the state allows us to release progressively along the way.
The twenty-seventh of August, you mean?
September.
September.
That's when the accreditation.
So it may be September before the board will know how individual schools did?
We're gonna try to do, we'll know some more about individual schools in advance of that, we just won't know the accreditation rating.
Oh, right, and I'm not asking for that, I'm asking for the school data.
Right, so the accreditation and the federal ratings is September, but they will release some information, and we will have that to you as soon as we can this month.
So that's not embargoed, is that correct?
Yes, it is.
Right, and so what we plan to do-
Is that a hard embargo? Because, I mean, I know more about the Virginia Beach scores than I know about the Norfolk scores.
Well, and, I won't say it that way. The, the, the point is, because we have some challenged schools, and because growth will really help our schools, we aren't gonna step ahead of the state and put out what we think a school's rating is going to be, given the-
I wasn't asking for the rating, I was just asking for the pass data.
Well, but I'm saying, so we have done what most districts are doing now, showing the preliminary district data. It doesn't include growth. But as we get toward, it's August fifteenth, August twenty-second, we will be giving the board more information by school.
By, it's pass rates by school. I mean, I understand that we don't, with this new formula, that we're not gonna be able to release what we guess is going to be their accreditation, but we certainly know what their pass rates are. I mean, their teachers know, their principals know.
We, we know, again, but got to step out of that one model, one data point model, because we also got to know what the growth impact is.
And I'm not disagreeing with that.
Right, so I just-
But I'm saying, in order to be able to continue to track-
We would, yeah.
We need to still, that's what I'd said before, is that we have two things now, and we have the accreditation with the growth model, which is so far overdue, that's something to really celebrate. However, we still need to look at student assessment data on an ongoing basis, how it trends, you know, like, I'd like to see the school data by a five-year trend. We used to get that trend data, like we just saw on, on the individual grade level things, that was wonderful.
And, and we will still do that, but do recognize, going forward, we won't have five years, because they are apples-to-orange comparison. Because, once, we can, we can create and pull out what the pure pass rates are.
Right.
But the state reporting that comes out will include the growth, and so we're gonna have to disaggregate. So, it's, we'll, we'll be doing both of those. The state doesn't require us to do both, but we will be doing both. But in this initial rollout, we're gonna give you as much data as we can, and we will have prior year, just as we did for the district-wide, we'll have prior year data as part of what we give the board later this month.
And it would seem to me that we could continue to have that, because the test, except for, I know the social studies changing, but the ones we're focusing on are reading and math, they will continue to take a test based on the same standards, no new standards yet coming out in those. And so I would certainly want to see the last four years, and I'd want to see this year's, which, you know, we're all aware-
You will.
Let me, let me finish. Because right now, the teachers know what the pass rates are. The principals know what their schools are. They've known, they've known since June. Central office, certainly, at a certain level, executive up, they know. So basically, the only people that really don't know are the seven members of the school board that were elected to run schools, and the parents whose children are our students. And, and so that's what my concern is, and that's why I was asking, is that information in, you know, are we being told by the state that we can't release it?
Yeah, as, when you look at this last slide that Dr. Bailey just put up, and she indicates internal use only, that's the language that has come to us, directed through the memos of the state release. So Dr. Bailey mentioned, we received some information today that we can only use internally. Public discussions like this go beyond an internal use. That's why we can't release it. But as we get toward the fifteenth meeting, we're gonna push on as much as we can put out on the fifteenth, and then we'll certainly put in your hands, by the twenty-second, additional information. But, but the fifteenth, we're gonna push out that which we can. I, I understand that frustration between what is known and what we're allowed to release.
So, across the state, the state is telling all the school divisions, districts, that their school boards cannot have that information?
That is not what the memo says. The memo says that this information that you have is designed for internal school district use only, and not for public release. And because school boards have to do business in the public, once we discuss the data, that is considered a public release.
I'm kind of, without words, I don't have to respond to that, because I'm still sitting here, and I know more about Virginia Beach data than I know about Norfolk public schools. So I'm not quite clear, but I'm not gonna hold up the board for that. But what I want to know, once you're able to release it, and I guess I, this is according to the norms, I asked the chair, if we could be sure that we get our five-year trends for each of our schools, if we could also pull out what's happening, even though these terms are going away, but still the schools that we have previously called, and are still at the moment calling for this test, our focus schools, our priority schools, the Title I labels, and then our accreditation denied. I'd like to see how those schools have done over the past five years. Are they trending up? Are they trending down? Looking like the earlier data, we'd probably be seeing good news there. But I'd like to see that, and I'd like to see that continue on as we move forward, whenever we're allowed to have that information. And so, formal request to the chair for that, thank you.
And to the chair, again, as we presented five years' worth of data today, that's, that's our intent. We will be doing that. I was saying, after this year, we will modify what the trend looks like, because schools that fall under the new methodology will really be the first year of that trend, so that we can truly have an apples-to-apples comparison. But certainly, those data points that are related to pass rates, we can certainly continue to provide those.
And that would be an apples-to-apples. Thank you.
Got it. Are there, Ms. Basie?
I just have a quick comment. I would encourage you, last year, I thought it was great how you highlighted, you had principals come and highlight the achievement in their schools, and I would encourage that again, if you're willing. I thought that was great to have the principals tell the story of what was happening in their schools, so.
We do intend to have stories from the field again, so we'll have three principals with us again.
Questions? Any other questions? I had a couple of questions. So, can you kind of discuss how the history is not gonna be taken into consideration? Our students will still be taking a test, but it will not be counting towards the accreditation rating?
Right, I'll, I'll defer to either Dr. Rogers or Ms. McGarrett to, you want me to go?
Well, with the social studies, initially, the thought was, back in March, we were given the option of using performance-based assessments, and then just in June, was it June, last seven?
It was-
Recently, we were shared, we were told that students would be taking the SOL test, however, it will not be counted in the accreditation measure. Is that right?
Yes.
And the state will not be developing new state-level social studies tests.
Correct.
That's where we get to local districts, and developing these performance-based assessments, which, again, I do my one soapbox thing, is that that becomes an unfunded mandate, both on time and resources, because we are required to demonstrate that we're doing assessments and social studies, these performance-based, but they, the state is not paying for it. So you recall, last year, at our legislative breakfast, I mentioned that to, to our delegation, because the state is saying, oh, yes, we're, we're doing fewer tests. And so, the legislators were all excited, well, we aren't administering as many tests, but they weren't aware that the requirement for administering tests was pushed to the district level. So it's off the state's plate, but it's not off our plates, and so.
So we still have to, we now have to make the test, we have to evaluate our students on the test, but it's not gonna be measured on a state rating?
Well, we're doing both.
And yes, and we, that's correct, and we'll have to report it to the state.
And report it to the state. But we're, what we test on is not gonna be the same as what other divisions test on.
Oh, no, we, we will, we're still, Bruce and his team have designed our curriculum to fit the needs, so we are teaching standards that are included in two thousand and ten as well as the current state.
The standards, but not necessarily the same, like, what the SOL test is that our kids take?
And because they're performance-based, it's not like the multiple-choice model that we currently have. So these would be various activities, they don't just occur one time of the year in the spring, we may be doing some of that over the course of the year, and so it's the compilation of those, those results over time that, that, that we will be presenting. So that's, it gives us a level of flexibility, but you're exactly right, you know, our performance-based assessments for fourth-grade social studies might not look the same as Jessup's.
Mm-hmm, okay.
But they are encouraging some regionalism in some conversation, and we've been partnering, been at the table with some districts, so we're gonna begin to see some similarities.
Could, oh, I'm sorry.
Can I finish up these last two questions? How is summer school accounted for in the graduation rates?
Summer school is included in the regular school year numbers, so we're finishing up this summer, and then that, another reason why they don't want to, schools to start releasing information is because they're consistently making corrections and updating the data bases at the state level. So the graduation numbers are one of those areas where they're updating on a weekly basis. So after our graduates graduate, and we upload our file towards the end of this month, then the reports for our high schools will reflect that change, or that update.
And if, if they make growth in the coursework that they're taking, that growth will be taken into consideration for the, no?
So now you're talking-
The growth at high school, remember?
Oh, okay.
Right, no growth in high school. But also, too, only the, the graduation from the summer, the graduates, count in the two thousand seventeen, eighteen numbers. However, our SOL cycle of testing starts for this school year, this summer.
Okay.
So summer testing will count in next year's results, but graduation occurs this year, and we get credit for that as part of our seventeen, eighteen school year.
Middle school students who take summer school, their scores will count towards the progress, if they move up?
If they're in the end of course.
Okay. If it's an end-of-course class, is that?
Yes, so we don't test, do SOL testing with the middle schoolers that are in the grade-level courses.
Okay.
Only, only EOC courses.
All right.
So that they can work towards their verified credit.
And then the, the last question is, the SOL retakes, that is still going to occur with-
Yes.
-the new methodology that they're using?
Yes, we're still required to provide opportunities. However, I will say that the requirements to satisfy the criteria for standard and advanced diplomas are going to change. And so also, some of the assessing at the various levels required will change.
Okay.
And so we will share that later in the fall.
Okay.
Yeah, well, that's another presentation on the revised graduation requirement. They, they go along with it, but there, there are some changes in the numbers of verified credits that students will have to have, and, and all of that.
All right, thank you. Okay, Ms. Basie?
Yeah, or Ms.?
Right, just a question that crossed my mind when you were talking about the social studies, and, and the, all, everything you were developing. Are you able to count that as a grade also, so that the child's not taking the special one that's developed, and then taking another one that's just for grading? Can you overlap that, so you don't have to double the number of tests children are taking, or performance task, or whatever you're using?
For the SOL test?
For, for the social studies assessments?
Yeah.
The answer is yes, we've got to map out and figure out-
So you can use it to grade, too?
So, so we can use that, right, and then we report their progress based on that.
Thank you, thank you.
You know, I lost, I had a similar question about the, the retake. But, and I lost my, the question just flew out. If it comes back, I'll.
Okay.
Raise my hand.
All right.
Just a recommendation, if it can be coordinated and scheduled, in light of all the activities for getting ready for school, if there is an opportunity for doing some two-by-twos or something, I think it's important that we try to find a way to share with the full board everything that we put into the board accountability plan and that scorecard. Because a lot of the indicators that we've, that we're talking about, we have there, and we have a schedule, and maybe, as part of that review, we may need to change some schedule, you know, based upon what the will of the board is, change some scheduling that we have in terms of when data is available, or maybe new things that we didn't consider that others will bring to the table. But I think if there's some way that we can get to a board-level knowledge base of what we have, then it will, it will help-
The accountability plan, you mean?
Then, in what we modify.
Okay.
Yeah, and I think it might be easier in a small two-by-two setting, where you can get time for the questions, and kind of dig a little deeper than trying to do it at this large of a session, and then we can come back later in the fall, or September, whenever, and then come back and revisit it as a, as a group. But I think a lot of the questions that we have are great questions, and, you know, I'm just looking, for example, under the improved student achievement under SOLs, we had by-subject, by-subgroups, accreditation, advanced performance SOL rates, focused priority schools, and we even talked about maybe getting back to doing a superintendent's annual report. So we've identified some of these indicators, and I think if we can bring everybody up to speed on that, it, it might be helpful as we, as we move forward.
As a matter of fact, Dr. Bailey and I, and the senior team, were just talking yesterday about, you know, the timelines around when we'll be able to populate data within the accountability plan.
Okay.
Some of it is when, when we can get it from the state, because that, that's automatic uploads, such as the pass rates and those things. And so, until we have that formally, we can't put that into our accountability system yet. But yeah, that's what we're working on, and, and we'll go forward.
Yes, my thought was a way of trying to, I thought Ms. Campson had some good points, as a way of trying to address those, and at the same time, get us all up to speed.
Okay.
Yeah, so my question, my question earlier, so we have the growth model now, are we, or is the state using, going to use projection models, too, to kind of help us determine where students are now, and to try to project where they might be, and what we might need to do in between, or, because I know some other states are also incorporating, you know, projections modeling to, to get at that information.
At this time, I don't think the state has tackled that portion of, of the methodology. Certainly, with our internal capacity, we're starting to look a little bit at that.
Okay.
Making open the formula and looking at it, yes.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, well, thank you very much for the presentation. I know that you all have been working tirelessly on making sure that our students are prepared, not just for the test, but for, for learning, and for the expectations that we all have for their success. So I really do appreciate the information, and I think it's going to be a learning curve for us as we go into this new model of school identification. And I think the two-by-two sessions will be very helpful, as we unpack the data and go deeper into the subgroups and the achievement gaps, and blend that with the accountability plan. I think that'll be good. So, we were scheduled to meet until seven o'clock, and we have about ten minutes left. I think that the discussions that we are going to have as far as matters of the board are gonna take a little bit longer than just ten minutes. So, let me put something out to you all. With regard to the norms and the values, can you please send me, and Carlos, and Dr. Boone, any recommendations, actually, CC to the whole board, any recommendations or thoughts that you have about the norms and the values? So that way, we can kind of get an idea as to where everybody is on their comfort level for adoption. The other items that we wanted to discuss were our goals and priorities, and then the committees. So- items that we wanted to discuss were our goals and priorities, and then the committees. So what we can do is, in agenda planning tomorrow, is look at the time that we have on the 15th, and see what we can do as far as getting that conversation going. I'm, I'm afraid that if we start that conversation, we'll, it's going to take a lot longer than, than we anticipate. Are you all okay with that? Or, no? Okay?
No. We postponed this. We postponed it from our first meetings early in July. We postponed it from last time. We didn't put it on the agenda. It's on the agenda again, and we're postponing again. And to me, this is the organization that should guide the work of this board all year. And it, I find it, I'm disappointed. I mean, all the discussion we had tonight was valuable, and we needed every, all this, this part of it. But we just keep pushing it down the road. The 15th, maybe we'll be in the same situation with an overtime running from the executive session, then we still won't get to this work. And this is, you know, we have a lot of new members on the board. There, a lot of new things are happening, and, you know, we need to look at new committees. We need to look at existing ones. This is what, you know, that's why I asked three weeks ago for it to be on the last one, and I understood. And then we hoped to have an extra meeting this month, and we weren't able to do that. I feel, again, that maybe we need to go back and look at a time that we can still meet. To let August slip away, and we still haven't established norms. We still haven't looked at goals and priorities. We still haven't revisited our committees, and maybe what we need to do. Because when I looked at committees, I found that we were not, we did not have a number of committees that, I mean, I was looking, when I went to look at committees, I looked for the two things that are my top priority, and I'm sure for everyone else in the room, which was student academic achievement and safe and secure schools. I did not find committees that were focused solely on those two areas, even though our priorities, three of the seven priorities directly address student academic achievement. But we have no committee looking at that. The biggest concern when I knocked on thousands of doors during the election was safe schools. We don't have a committee that's really focusing on that. And so we continue to move on without having those valuable discussions, and time is slipping away. And the clock is ticking on the lives of our children, and we're not looking at safe schools and student academic achievement as a focus of the board and a task force or committee. I mean, we saw Virginia Beach, boom, right after the Florida shooting, there they were with their task force. They've already reported out, and they're already implementing those recommendations. I think we're getting a little behind the curve here. So I would request that, and remember, I had this concern earlier this evening. I would request that maybe we revisit the idea of having some type of meeting that focuses just on our organization that we haven't had a chance to do yet. That's my request. I'm not happy with just trying to push this to the 15th, when we could be sitting here with the exact same problem for the third time.
No, I, I, I hear you, Ms. Campson. I know that that's a very important part of our work and a part of our duty as the board, under the time constraints and with the type of discussion that we're about to go into.
Oh, I agree that we can't get it by 7:00. I'm not disagreeing, but we need to come up with another solution instead of just pushing it forward to the 15th, because that's not working.
I, I hear you. Ms. Basie?
I wholeheartedly agree with that. I was going to ask what the time, because, you know, typically in the summer, because we have so much to review and go over, we've elongated the meetings. And I was advocating last time that we do that, so that we do have those discussions. Is there opportunity at the August 15th meeting? What's the current?
So let, let, let me work with Dr. Boone, then, with their schedule. We're going to be in agenda planning tomorrow. And what we'll do is, what I, what I heard from the last time when we met was, it was difficult to get everybody in before 4:00. And I want to be respectful of that. But what we can do is, I can work with Dr. Boone and figure out availability on staff side, and maybe send out a couple of suggestions for some extra meeting times.
Just one, just one extra meeting focused solely on the-
Right, right. We'll send out-
Wednesday?
Mm-hmm.
Or an additional Wednesday?
Yeah. We were, we were, we were looking. We, we, I was kind of anticipating the need to have that, and we were looking, and it didn't end up working out. But we're on it. So what I'll go ahead and do is, tomorrow, we'll, we'll discuss that, and we'll look, and we'll get something sent out to everybody, because I understand that schedules are very important.
I really don't want to see August 15th pass, and we have not done this important work that should have been done last month.
Got it. Got it. Got it. Okay.
I'm going to, I'm going to beat everyone to the ground by reminding you, but I, and I know you all in agreement that we need to do this. And thank you very much for backing me up on that, Tonya. I really appreciate it.
Okay.
Now we're going to operate.
Mm-hmm. Okay. So then, is everybody comfortable with, at least, doing that with the norms part? Not saying we're not going to discuss it, but at least to kind of get a jumpstart on that discussion? Because-
Yes. And we need to do that. But also, Carlos and I talked about the one section, the operating procedures, and he and I have both been out of town. We have not met on that. So I need to find out if he has done anything on his end.
Okay. All right. That sounds good.
Just a question. Is that, is that the manual?
Yeah.
Okay. I have some input I'd like to send to you all on that.
Okay.
Send it to the whole board.
Okay, I will.
Because that sounds very helpful.
Yeah. Because we, I'll send it to you.
If you want to be involved, if we meet, I would love to have you involved as well.
Yeah, I didn't know there was a separate group, but sure.
He mentioned it at our July 7th meeting. It was very, at the very end, as we were, so, and nothing's come of it yet.
Okay. Okay. So then go ahead and adjourn the meeting with the plans to come back and just, and send out some information to everybody on an extra meeting to discuss the matters of the board that we were going to be discussing tonight.
Madam Chair, before you adjourn, just on that point, you know, one of the things we did in the past, we were, we looked at, you know, we only did the one business meeting during the summer. And that's how we were able to have elongated work sessions. I don't know everything that's being considered for the 15th meeting, but it may be a possibility of, you know, depending upon what's on the agenda that needs to be voted upon, that maybe some of that can be reduced, which could allow for more discussion on the items that Ms. Campson just mentioned on, on the 15th, if you don't come up with another, another date. And the other thing I'd just like to ask, since you'll have agenda planning tomorrow, at least have an opportunity to have some discussions. In the schools board's budget over the last few years, we had put some funds aside to allow for the superintendent of the board to access private counsel if we, if we needed it. I like to, I'm going to send an email out to the board and, for a request, to see what the process is of being able to get some private legal counsel. So I'll be sending that to the board.
Okay. All right. That being said, we stand adjourned.
I had, yeah, sorry. Just, just one point. So I know we have a graduation next Monday on August 6th. Do we know, are the other, are other schools also having graduations? Because I'd love to know about them, so that-
That's one graduation. So all of the graduates come together for the one graduation that's at Moriah.
Okay, yeah. All right. Okay. Okay. I thought, okay. Thank you for that. I didn't want to leave anybody out. Anybody have anything else? Then we are adjourned. Thanks.